Welcome to tonight's meeting of April fourth, two thousand twenty-two. It is a study session. And the first thing we have to do is vote for Mr. Rosati being absent.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Can I ask a question about that since we're on the topic? This might be for Mr. Frankel. I'm just curious because I know we have a limitation on absences until what like? And maybe this is a question for another time, but I'm curious what happens at what point? Like at some point besides if we, because I mean, I know we have the authority to continue to approve those absences. But you know, is there any teeth in if you know, people said no and people continue to not be here?
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. So that the ordinance that Council adopted, I believe it was in twenty-one, contemplates allowing for remote participation in excess of twen- two absences per year. I don't know whether Council Rosati will be participating remotely.
He isn't.
Tonight. I would probably then look to the charter, which addresses unexcused absences. As for regular meetings, and I would need to read it as far as study sessions to know whether the there were a charter limit was being approached by an unexcused absence.
Okay. I can look it up too, but I was just curious what? What that looks like. I think that when we, when we did pass it, we had that kind of two limit in there because it was nice. But the thought with two was that we really didn't think that that was going to be the norm we wanted to operate under. And so it got me thinking about it.
Is it two per the four-year term or?
Two per year, per year, I think is what we had anticipated.
Yeah, re- remote participation in excess of two times per year requires a majority vote to approve.
Got it. And he's had three remote, and that's reason we had to vote on the second, the third one. And this is his first, just not coming to me.
And you just also for clarification, if not everybody was here for that. Initially, the council at the time had also wanted to completely not allow for quasi judicial hearings and executive sessions. But I pushed back on that as well as then everybody ended up deciding against it because of COVID things. And my take on it and everybody ended up agreeing was if you tell me I can't be here and I otherwise would make my sick butt in here, then I didn't think that was fair. So that's why we had added those. So I think it's important context just to get our thought of what we were thinking when we decided that we wanted to keep that.
Uh huh, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, these two pages are just quickly. I've heard from one to three people on different things in here. You all have heard and I emailed and I think they're pro temp emailed about the homeless camps that we visited on Saturday, so we don't need to go over that. I've gone over it with Jody, so he knows where it will be moved maybe into the queue because it's probably our next biggest group. Also, I know we've all seen that this survey for the rodeo market, the first two questions weren't working. I, I verified on my phone, they weren't working. He's waiting for verification that they got it fixed and he'll let us know when that happens. And then these are the things I just need double check on some of them that we have for votes to move on. So that staff knows graffiti ordinance was talked about during strap planning. And I think it's been mentioned at least one or two other times. Do we have four people that want to hear that? Jody, that's a go for sure.
Got it.
And you guys, I don't know if I'm using the right word, but there was a lot of talk about how do we? We get all these emails, we get all these requests, where do we go? We should have a place we can go and see it's been answered, it hasn't been answered, still needs to be worked on. What's that called and are we doing it?
And this kid, this is conversation has been happening since before the election. We had talked, I think, few strap patents ago about it. And I had used the example of like, and for me, this would work. I don't know if there are legal things that you have to adhere to because of open records. But even if we had something as simple as a Trello board that had columns that said, this counselor asked this thing, here's where it is. Because I think one of the things that we've talked about in the past is I might ask something and forget about it till, you know, I get an answer sometime later or a resident reaches back out to me. And then the other part of it that I heard multiple people bring up was sometimes that seeing other people's questions either brings up more questions for us or answers ones where we see them get answered. So the idea of having some sort of dashboard that allows us to see what's coming in and where they're at in the process would be helpful. And I imagine that might be easier for you guys to manage to have one place where you kind of give us updates.
That's thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. The good news is we do this already. We do track all of your emails and responses. So I've spoken with Cody earlier today and we will start including that reporting out in our weekly emails to you on the Thursday emails. So then we'll, we'll now include, we'll, we'll, we'll figure out the format that we suggest. We'll try that out and then you can give us feedback on what works best. But good news is we already do track them at the staff level. And we'll now move that into a format that will be helpful for city council to see on a weekly basis. That's helpful.
As a follow-up, I think partly, I, I think I like the Trello board better because it takes the responsibility of us continuing to follow up in that. And so it's just, it puts more of the responsibility back on council than to be able to see in a platform that, okay, this is being worked on this and that therefore we don't have to then bother staff for compiling that and putting it in email format. And, and quite frankly, we get a lot of emails. So if we could just have a form that just openly shows council what's being worked on and what's been worked on in the past, because there's previous times where I have pulled up great prior emails and I'm able to then help respond in that form. So I mean, we can see how that works, but I'd be in favor of a more of a platform.
I have a hard question. What's a Trello board?
All right, come on, get up to speed here.
It's basically project management dashboard. I mean, it's just because like we, I use them in my line of work a lot because I can go and see where something is in the process. And I don't have to, like, I don't mind getting an email report out, but sometimes things do get lost in email where, like with those boards, if you are using them and they're set up for you, you kind of just get in the habit of going and seeing, okay, where's my, you know, where are the issues I asked about or being able to, you know, add things.
And you can, you can search them like, okay.
The ad might be harder, like you may want us to still funnel request. If you look at a platform like that, we probably still would want to look at what process they end up on there so that we're just not going on there loading stuff up and you don't know about it. But just as a, as a report out, it would be nice to be able to have some sort of actual dashboard in conjunction with the email because maybe some people like the email, but it's just, it does, it gets lost. Like one of the things I've noticed happens, especially with like the web forms, because a lot of times they have the same subject line, so I'll miss ones because it'll, they'll actually roll up into ones that are from two months ago that I haven't cleared out of my inbox. So.
I forget that you had.
Yeah.
So it's just nice to have somewhere to go for the things that, like if a resident follows up with me or, you know, I take that, I try to make a certain amount of time a week that I go and try to follow up with residents on things. So it would be nice to have somewhere to kind of have a report out.
Yeah, enough to know.
Yes, we'll, we'll get back on that. Would, would it be helpful in the interim if, if that's a software based, being a software based solution? It may not be something we can get rolling by Thursday, but we could, we could give you the, start doing the email summary for now and then commit to reviewing a much more comprehensive Trello, Trello approach.
There's also stuff like smart sheet or, you know, that's a little bit less like, I don't know. But yeah, yeah. It's and, and, but it would be helpful to have just a, I don't know if I need a blow by blow in an email, but just a link a regular basis to that, to whatever it is, the smart sheet or the Trello board or whatever.
Okay. And I know we've got a presentation waiting for us, so I'm just hoping we can do. Metro Mayor says ask for a signature on a letter about fentanyl. They made it a little bit tougher today. Some people had written in and they're trying to point out more that any fentanyl is bad fentanyl. So they changed it a little bit. Are we okay? Are we against the laws that are trying to be passed that four ounces of fentanyl are okay, even though it kills two thousand people? Yes?
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't weigh in at all, but.
Okay. You've got the majority to say yes, so that can go. Oh, I will take care of that, Jody, because it was sent to me and I just have to push a button that says yes.
Okay. Thank you.
A voting question was at town hall. We've had it all along. Some people have brought it up before it gets too far down the road. Does this council want to discuss voting with city staff and all the people that need to?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask, would you want to do that before we had scheduled the security audit results back or combine it at the same?
Just know that we're serious about it to talk about it.
Down the road, down the boat ramp a ways.
Okay. Very helpful. Thank you.
Bruce had asked for two requests, the twenty forty conference, to land use. Jody, I know in an email said it was coming May sixteenth. My question back, is that okay? And is everybody else okay? All right. So that's a go. And for, just because we're live and whatnot, we know that he asked for a contract for a business in helping in downtown review. Are people okay with that?
Yeah. Can we get just an update on downtown at the same, I mean, we just, yeah, the whole thing.
That's what we need.
The whole, the whole, the whole package.
They need some history too. I would like the history of the G I D given to this council.
Um, I, I guess priority wise, it's helpful as all these things are coming up for us to be able to, once they're on the list, to get them confirmed over just what do we want to hit first? Yeah. Those will be lengthy.
Um, this has been brought up at strategic planning and I don't know where it is, but there was a majority making sure there still is for ten acres or less that the project has to come to council.
Yes.
Okay, that's a go.
So right now I have a draft memo to city council on this, which is a recap of administrative authorities of staff as a starting point. Would that work? Because I can get that to you pretty quickly and then, and then you could instruct me at that night to then drop the limit or change a limit. Is that, or do you want to present an option?
I, I'm okay with that, but I think in the meantime, I just want to make sure that nothing is getting put in the hopper as far as development that is less than something that come back to us, specifically that one. I mean, there's other ones that I'm happy to review and I think we should review them. But I want to make sure that, you know, another thing of apartments don't start popping up that we don't know about.
Yeah, it'd just be helpful to understand when you do bring that, you know, the authorities in, just how many projects are coming in on a regular basis, because that could enhance for other cities in a backlog. So you have to balance how much we want to spend on this.
The next part on the city ads is just me. I read the one that came out, I think Sunday night or Sunday sometime I read it. It just, it makes it look like that we're open twenty-four seven. And then as you keep reading it, it talks about the first responders and utilities. And then if you press on the more button, it takes you to all of these buttons where you can call and whatnot. If I felt that way, I can only imagine how the public felt. They truly, if you ask them and listen to them, they want to be able to ask questions. They want to be able to come in. They want a phone answered when they call. So I just, here's my thoughts. Can we start doing education, educating around recycling, making it a family event? What's accepted for recycle, benefits of recycling, ways to recycle, where to drop off? And only those items can be dropped off. Containing are contacting your trash provider for recycled it. Education on composting, not preaching to people, panicking them and throwing things at them that they need to do this or else. It's education and why they would want to do it in a nice manner, educational wise, so they can learn. How many people did we hear at front doors say, well, this is my first home and I don't know how to do this or I don't know how to do that. That's what, how we have to think and help people. Education on the water. We didn't educate on water. We spread fear and I don't know what else around water for two years. We need to educate them and not lecture, but facts. How much water did you yard? Yeah. Scenarios, I, I still, I tell them every time they ask me, go to Rich's neighbor and he has a great formula and it makes sense. I certainly saw overwatering. I'm, I'm sure many people overwater. Plants and trees, what are they for the area? Why aren't we working with our own garden spots? And I can't get behind the plant boxes that we sell and we tell everybody, oh, look at this and this is better for zero escaping, da, 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 da. If you read the fine print folks, one to three of those plants in that entire box are only meant for this arid region. False advertising. I mean, it just gets me riled up.
We should be able to fix that quickly.
So anyway, what are the best times to water? Just aerating, what is aerating? What kind of fertilizer is, is good? I, I just went off because that ad just really made me mad this weekend. Quick evaluation for Thursday's town hall, what worked, what didn't work, what differences or what can we do different? I have some suggestions with how to do it differently, so we don't get the people that give us five minutes of stuff and didn't have agendas to run that night and grabbed the microphone and, and went with it. But we handed out index cards, I don't care how many you give each person, they are going to have to sign it. We put it someplace, we pick those cards out, we ask for the person to raise their hand that's in the crowd so we know who we're talking to. And that way it's, it's the same for anybody, everything's in there.
Um, just two things, one on the education piece. I would love to be able to extend some of that to our business community, so I don't know.
Oh, sure. I was just on a rant for the one thing, sorry.
No, that makes sense. And then for the town hall, I, I'd like us to be able to have a couple of different formats for these meetings so that, you know, there for sure, not a lot of, not a lot of people were able, you know, out of all the people that came, right, probably expecting to be able to talk, not everybody was able to, to share. And there are with public outreach, a lot of different formats where we can mix it up and provide for more people to comment, whether that's in, you know, like some of the formats that we've had in the past is like grouped by, could be by council member, could by, it could be more by topic or just in smaller settings so that we can, you know, have people.
As long as we don't direct the conversation and make it be what we want it to be, because I've been to those and those aren't good.
Yeah. It's, it, we, I think it's partly how you, you know, we all agree that we're not, we're just there to listen. And, and sometimes it's just more of a community conversation at a table, especially if it's topical. You could have staff there being just, you know, there to answer questions. So, you know, I, I think there's a great utility in having a town hall format, but there's also benefits to having some of these other ones and you can shape like just model, you know, just kind of go and do one and then do another format and do another format and go back around.
The one that we did at Noah's, I'm trying to remember what it's called now.
The establishment.
The establishment. I thought that one was kind of a good mix in between both, because it wasn't like a, the problem that I've seen it like, like topic driven tables is you end up getting the people who that's their topic and then they kind of hover around that topic. And it's, I feel like it's easy that it ends up, a lot of it going to staff versus us, which isn't bad, but for ours, where we want to hear, I think there's less of a, of a benefit to us in my experience. But I really liked the one that was kind of in between where they had different subject matter experts of different staff areas in the different rooms. And then we kind of travel around with the groups instead of making them travel around. I thought that was a good in between.
I went to that one, yeah.
We did.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay. I appreciated going around and saying names and understanding where everybody was from and.
We had a good crew. I mean, they were from everywhere.
Yeah. And I thought that took some time, but I thought in looking back, it was a good exercise to just, some people didn't even know they live right next to each other. It was just, it was good kind of also community building. And so I appreciated that. What I think we could do is maybe also, and this is a good first start, but I think space wise, we were limited. I think that maybe we could look into a larger space.
Well, thank God we learned in one of the coffee shops they started out with.
Yes.
I knew those wouldn't work.
We wouldn't fit. So I think that would be good as to look at a larger space. I would also like to make, make it more consistent. If there's a consistent, like a monthly or a quarterly town hall, people are more apt to then already get it on their calendars so that they are more available for either listening or participating. I do like, I'm in between on the staff, being there to answer questions just because I think that we're there because that's their chance to have dialogue with council. And so I feel like that's then our ownership too, as far as what's working, what's not, what can we do better as a city? And then also work with staff then to move that forward and to make changes. But I also appreciate that, because I went to the Noah, one, two, I appreciate that staff is there because some answers could be, some responses to answers could be immediate instead of we'll, we'll get back to you. I do like the fact that though we can have as much coming in and I could hear everything, right? I think there's benefit for people to hear everything. When I was at Noah's in siloed areas, they were talking about things I wanted to know and understand, but I couldn't hear them because I was part of this group over here. And so I get really anxious and nervous about maybe splitting up people. I liked us as a big whole just because it felt more community driven. So with that, I'll just pass up a ton.
Good to know, Bruce.
Thank you. One of our regular Monday night attendees asked why, why are we into index cards to get more people going? And I said, you know, that's a great idea, but our, our public has to have confidence that those are not being cherry picked. And he said, well, people will put their name in there and you pick someone out of random. They pull the name out of the hat, that's person, then that person who asked a question gets to pull the next one. Because there was also, why don't you group it by topics? I go, well, that's helpful, but also then I, I don't want there to be a thought, oh, well, they didn't pick mine because, you know, and right now we want to get as much flow. And I don't mind later trying different options, but I think a couple of these getting under our belt. And I talk too much. That was part of the problem. We need enough questions, so.
No, the people that gave us diatribes is what slowed us down. And then when I had to get one under control.
Yeah. You know, and that, that's a learning process for the people who attend too. So, yeah, but I, I think overall I was, I was very happy with the turnout and the people were engaged and they were excited. And even afterwards, they were, they kept talking. So that was awesome.
Yeah, they were there a long time.
Yep.
Right. First thing on the education piece, we send out that thing four times a year. That'd be the perfect place for it.
What thing?
Oh, for our education pieces.
Recycling, watering, and we should put in tangible things. Like if you read our code for high use water landscapes, it's three gallons per square foot per month.
Well, I just know we have to do it several different ways. And since we're, they're paying for what they're putting out there now, I'd rather have it be this kind of stuff they're putting on Facebook than some of the stuff they're already putting.
And I didn't know we were putting ads on Facebook.
Well, I, maybe not ads, but they're sponsoring them, so it's like an ad.
We can talk about that later. On the town hall, I agree much more with Counselor Emmons that this is not a listening tour. This is dialogue. I think the people came there to get answers. I think if I hear one more listening tour from a politician, I'll pull the rest of my hair out. They wanted answers.
That's what happened to me too.
And then two, we have a very kind, generous, patient mayor. Okay. And that's a good attribute, but you were taking advantage of that. And it wasn't until the crowd said enough that we got that. But that again, as Rick said, is a learning experience and I don't have any problem with that. I do like the randomness, the true randomness of any order. Right now it's self-serve, you get in line, but everyone can see who's standing in line. So we can't modify that the way that some of these other questions cherry picking get modified.
The communication staff wanted a podium up there and only three at a time. That to me wasn't as. That to me wasn't as fair as just having random mics out there. Um, but if we go with a place to put our, the cards and whoever's going to draw them, we can, the first person, whoever it is, draw it and we get the name. And, and if it's not signed, it's not asked.
Right.
And if the per, uh, because as we learned today with emails, we've got people that send us emails that accuse this, that and the other thing, and they're not real. So that we need to validate. We have the person, it's Jody Andrews, raises his hand and then the question's read. And if there's a bunch of crap before it, we still look for that question and we only read the question.
Good. Um, on the, the note card, I think one of the things that Rich and I talked to a gentleman who wanted to be there, but it was like, I'm never going to get my call. When he, once he saw the crowd, he was like, I'm just going to go. And we're like, well, you're talking to me. So I mean, your question can come to us. So we were able to talk to him and he emailed us and he's one of the ones we sent in. So, um, whether it's the note cards or something, some way for people, if they're not able to stick around and be able to still get their question to us. Because, um, to your point, not everybody's going to be able to answer. Maybe they're not comfortable either, so.
Yes. The only other thing I would say is, um, I have found it very helpful to have some rules of engagement, um, stated upfront so that we will be civil with one another. We will treat each other with respect. Everybody's voices, you know?
And that needs to go out when they're doing emails or the Facebook stuff, the, the other documents that go out, wherever it's advertised. And the only other thing that just, we do not need hour glasses or no microscopes in order to have, to be able to read. I don't, most of my phone calls are where is it and what's the address? Address wasn't on the first ones that came out. And the print was minus 16, I think.
That's number one thing you learn when you start getting into this realm. People, you need, we need bigger font. We have a lot of, uh, older folks that want to participate and the first thing you'll get yelled at at doors is, can you read this? So.
Looking at the calendar only because it will have been, um, not quite two months, but once we get into May, there's graduations and all sorts of things going on. And probably we're going to be starting to, um, narrow down for a, uh, city manager search and whatnot. So here's the other thing, I think it needs to be on a Tuesday or Wednesday. It was after the, I didn't even think of this. It was horrible to have that wonderful meeting Thursday. And that last, one of the last questions, and I'm saying to that woman, somebody will get back to you. And I'm eating my words as they're coming out because we're not open on Friday. Who was going to get back to her? And so, um, a Tuesday would be good because we have Wednesday and Thursday with staff that can. So does May 3rd work? Is that a, it's a Tuesday.
Tuesdays are generally better.
I can't do Wednesday.
Me either.
I'd have to, I mean, I just have to check if I have something on that. For my job. Tuesdays are the.
Council meetings. Those dang council meetings.
Okay. So.
I'll, I'll.
I can light this down, can you?
Yeah.
Um, but let's sort of go that direction. And we need a bigger venue. Um, I know, uh, several of us were in historic Westminster on Saturday for different things at different times. I didn't know everybody was down there, but, um, they certainly would love one at the MAC. I don't think the Grange, if we got the, what we had this time, the Grange would be pretty tight. So I would say the MAC if they're open. Okay. I'm sorry to make Juliet wait, but those have been.
Don't you want the council reports?
Yes, thank you.
Well, I think I should let, um, Councilor Nermal go first on the, uh.
Oh. Go ahead, cause I'm not going to.
No, no, no. I've already said someone, including, it's just time to keep.
You go ahead.
Well, uh, Councilor Nermal and I have, uh, completely opposite views on how we want the front range to develop. So we truly as a council need to decide which voice we want to send to, uh, Dr. Cog, because they're going to be speaking for our council and we want that person to be speaking council's voice. Uh, when I was there, the first thing, the first item of agenda on the Dr. Cog council was, how can we grow Dr. Cog? How can we make Dr. Cog bigger? That's, that's their focus. You know, they've got a staff of a hundred and forty people. They have about $31 million, of which half of it they spend on their staff. Now what they control is they control $500 million of tip money. So that's a very powerful thing. And what they want to control now is they want to control housing money. So I think they want to add more staff members and then control all this federal housing money. And I know that Dr. Cog has a dramatically different vision than I do. I think I sent everybody my, uh, complete Colorado piece that I did. Okay? Here's the latest and greatest of the thing. And they still have in, they still have in there, they want to grow. They want to grow the Denver Metro area to 4.3 million people by 2040. That's still on their goal. That's still their agenda. They want to jam the people in. This is also, Dr. Cog is where that Westminster window article about Westminster wanting to grow to 151,000, supposedly that's where that number came from. Okay? So this all goes right back to Dr. Cog. And Dr. Cog again wants to put high density into these urban centers or activity centers or whatever you want to call them. Now, we're sort of in a neutral position here because we have a lot, we have four activity centers, I think. You know, so we're not one of the less fortunate municipalities in Denver Metro. But that's where the growth and that's where the money is going to be. And that's where the unfairness, I think, would all come from. So just, we have to very soon decide whose voice we want. My next thing was, I was, I want to also point out in our demographic survey, from 2010 to 2020, uh, there were 5,000 housing units added to Westminster and they were mostly multifamily. You know, if you go back to 2010, we probably had something like 30,500 single family water taps, maybe 31,000. Today we have 31,500. So we grew almost no single family home and everything in multi-family. Is that who we wanted? Uh, the next thing was Rocky Flat. It was like a never list from four years ago. It was the same, uh, it seems like it's, uh, and this is going to be very harsh for me to say, but it's saying it's a lifetime job for the manager of that thing. I think he was an aide to Tim Worth a long time ago and he just runs this thing and he gets his salary and gets paid. And they're just mean to the people who call in and beg and plead with them about their word worries and fears. I mean, these people are just, they're completely distraught. And they've also talked to the board so many times, there's this sort of animosity between the ordinary people. And of course, what's so difficult about it is the Rocky Flat Stewardship Committee is an LSO, a local stewardship organization. And as such, cannot recommend anything to the federal government. Which is bizarre. I mean, besides taking all the income in flat, what are we doing? There was one thing I thought very important at the meeting it said, is they want to have a trail exiting the west, the east side of Rocky Flat into the west part of Westminster across Indiana. Uh, I would recommend that this council not allow that. Okay? The only thing that's been cleaned up at Rocky Flats is the COU, which stands for Central Operating Unit. And that's where all the buildings were and the storage was and everything else like that was all there. And that place was very thoroughly cleaned and cleansed. They picked up dirt and shipped it up. I think New Mexico, one that sent to the whip site, New Mexico. Okay? The problem is, is after you get out of the COU, you have all this land around that's called the buffer. And nothing has been done in the buffer area. Absolutely nothing. And as a result, the Cray Hardy maps from 1970 are still completely valid and effective. Because the half-life of the kiln room is 24,000 years. So from 1970 now, 50 years, it's not changed at all. And a lot of the really high level radiation was not cleaned up in the COU. Well, that was all cleaned up in the COU, but then when it went into the buffer, it wasn't touched at all. And if we're going to have hikers and equestrians out there, this could bring to life the biggest fears that so many of the anti-Rocky Flats people have. So I think we need to talk about where we want to have Westminster play.
Could we get some sort of presentation update from them? I mean, it's been a long time since anybody that talked about those specific things have been out. I don't know how many of you have seen that. I was on that council for some time, so I at least compared the central area you're talking about. I am curious though, have they seen uptick in homeless out there? Because I know that is something that they deal with just like everybody else. No?
No, I, I, there has not been, uh, the biggest concern out there is the damage that the elk herds do. There are no prairie dogs out there, um, at all and, uh, no trespass from that standpoint. I thank Councilor Baker for covering that today's, um, meeting. But, uh, also too, you know, there's alternative ways to complete that Rocky Mountain Trail without cutting through there too. So be much, much safer from that standpoint. So I think it's something that we should have a discussion on as a council, move forward that way.
Yeah. Anyone else? Sarah, since you're the other half of Dr. Cog.
So, um, you know, Councilor Baker's definitely putting words and thoughts into my mouth versus what I actually would represent. Because, um, you know, I, I don't know, I'm not the one who put out 150,000 people for, for Westminster. Um, so just want to say that, you know, I hear what the community wants and I, um, for sure would be focusing on the things that, um, Dr. Cog, you know, it's not about, um, that they want all the growth to happen in the, in the state. They're anticipating growth to occur in the state. So what they're trying to work with is, hey, if all this is coming, where should it go? And so that's some of what Dr. Cog is dealing with. Um, so I just want to give that context. And in that, they brought up things like, um, things to evaluate. So not necessarily to, um, you know, expand for expansion sake, but to evaluate certain programs that might be of assistance in, um, for our overall region. One of those includes an economic development district designation. So, um, just kind of asking, uh, all the cities, hey, are you interested in just studying this to see if it would be of some benefit? Um, so that, that was interesting to me. You know, I, I think there was, there was a general agreement from folks that, yeah, we, you know, we'd be interested in learning more about what that could do for us. There's a, um, there's grants that they could get to basically, um, fund, uh, you know, initial analysis for Dr. Cog. Um, and that would result in a comprehensive economic development strategy. And, um, then it could help us get, uh, funding, federal funding that the state is not getting to help us with anything that might support our economy, our state economy. So, um, that was one of the things that they, and you know, depending on what comes out of that, there might need to be, you know, uh, some staff that would help manage that over time. But if it's getting the state additional funding and access to resources, that's something that I think everybody was willing to consider. Um, one of the other things too is just they, you know, they are our area agency on aging. And so we have, uh, actually I think it was Colorado has one of the second highest aging, uh, populations in the nation. So, um, that is significant in terms of trying to understand, do we have enough, um, do we have enough programs to serve our aging community? And one of the things that they were, um, they have accountable health communities project that, um, helps them identify, um, you know, one, one of the interesting statistics they gave is their health and housing, they have the supportive health, at-home health to help people age in place. And that actually reduced emergency visits by 45%. And that, so there are things that they are doing that are really good. And so they might, they may want to look at expanding some of those because of the impact they're having. So I would say helping more people to age in place is a benefit.
Before we go on.
Yeah.
If it's okay with council, we'll pause here. We need to get the chamber on because we have until 12:30, or until 7:30.
Oh, okay.
Um, didn't know that, so let's dial them in, dial them in.
We just found out.
Okay.
Okay.
Brian, can you make that happen?
Yeah.
It's like this. Happening to be all month.
There we go.
It worked.
Sprinkled up.
Welcome Juliette and, uh, go.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much, um, Council Mayor and staff for allowing me to present virtually. I would have loved to be there in person, but as you can hear, I am not only sick, but I'm also fasting. So this is the way that I'm going to present tonight. Um, but I know several of you have been engaged with our chamber in the past. You may be familiar with chambers in general. Uh, so I don't mean to be elementary in the way that I'm presenting this, but I thought a great way to get us started is thanks to the structure around our organization, moving into some updates, uh, kind of by the numbers over the last couple of years combined together. And then what's ahead for our organization. So I'll be as quick as possible so I can take up more questions at the end. That's generally my mode of operation. Um, and so let's just jump right into it. Our organization of course is, uh, found, was founded in 2013. We were founded, uh, by small business owners for small business to be a voice for them at city, state and federal level. So to that end, we are governed by our board of directors who are elected by and for our membership on a continually annual basis. They represent a number of different industry and representatives from owners to employees of larger organizations. In the last couple of years, so in 2020, um, our past chairman was Peter Brissette, which some of you may know. Uh, Peter's also plugged in with the city with your boot camps that you've been holding with the SBDC. And just last year, Wayne Anderson, who's also pretty heavily involved, not only within the Chamber City, um, and our overall community. When we look, take a step down, then you're looking more on the management side and basically how the organization runs on a day-to-day basis. So our board, which I've mentioned to you, generally has a minimum of about 10 to 12. Um, it could be in excess of that, but we always operate as lean as possible. Um, they select your chamber leadership, which is myself, and then it's on me to kind of shape the staff that we have around that. So when I took over for this chamber about five years back, I was their first part-time executive. Um, to date, we now not only have Mia's full time, we also have another, uh, staff, two staff people and two contact lobbyists as well with us. The third layer of course is our stakeholders. And our stakeholders, I like to refer to our, our members. It's also our overall business community. So our membership is individuals, it's businesses, um, it could be nonprofits, governments, entities. It's simply anyone that has an interest in either supporting the overall community, supporting business, or those that kind of move commerce forward. Uh, those stakeholders are also the ones that are involved with our advisory groups that we have, working groups, task forces within the chamber and even committees that we have. Um, a quick run-through of some of those for you. Uh, our, our task forces of course are our events task force, which focuses on our annual events that we have throughout the year. We have five key signature ones. We also have our young professionals task force, which is anyone that's 21 to 45. And they are out there doing a lot of community service hours. And in fact, will be supporting the city, um, with your, uh, global cleanup day here this month. So toward the end of the month, they do go out there and support, um, that initiative. In terms of our committees, we have an outreach arm and that's through our ambassadors group. They are heavily plugged in on welcoming new businesses that open within the city of Westminster and also those businesses that affiliate. and also those businesses that affiliate with our organization as our public relations arms. The second committee that we also have is our government affairs. And I know there are about three counselors that are on right now presently that also serve on that committee. They have been since our founding as, kind of through that lens, as individuals or business owners, but also give some updates from city council when those take place. So when those monthly government affairs meetings transpire, they're generally plugged in on that. So that is a quick run-through of our overall governance as an organization. We can have maybe the next slide. Thank you. This next slide just kind of quickly captures membership. And I didn't go into a whole lot of detail on here, but I wanted to give a perspective of kind of our growth over the last few years. I shared with you that we were founded in 2013. I started with them in 2017, or started with the chamber in 2017. We had about 175 members that were affiliated with us as active members through the chamber. To date, we have a little over 400 members that are connected with our organization. And you can see that depicted in that growth from 2017 year-end to kind of where we are to date 2022. Kind of the overall percentage growth or percentage change over this last couple of years has been a 16% increase. It is by far the lowest that we've had in our history as a chamber, but that is attributed to COVID. And it's actually a huge win for us because during a time where a lot of organizations were pressuring their members to pay up or to invest in their chamber, we did not do that. We actually took the other route and were not invoicing people for about nine months. So we worked with folks that were able to pay. The ones that were not able to, we just kind of held on and made sure that we were there to be of best support. Again, we're here as an organization to build a better business community. And we did it feel like that would be fair if we're over here kind of putting pressure on them when they're not really even open or making that additional revenue to apply toward things. The other question that we sometimes get is, what is the, the makeup of our membership? So what industry do we cover? And generally with chambers, they're usually heavy on like your real estate. They're heavy on your retail. Again, we're an anomaly on this, which is no surprise. We do have a large number of kind of business professional services. That's our first top category that we have. Then it goes into our personal and healthcare services. And then our third would be the retail restaurants. And then kind of the fourth and the, the top four, if I broke that down for you, is the lodging, which is most of our hotels. It's our event venue spaces and such. So the last thing that I wanted to emphasize on the membership component, and this was just a one that I, I like to reiterate to folks is, around the time of COVID, we were actually ones that did not take out any PPP, not because we couldn't have used that, but our principle was by our board and even myself, I shared this vision that we are here for business. So if they're not around, then there is no point for an us. And so instead, we focused on supporting our businesses and applying for those funds and seeking and accessing those. Next slide, please. Okay, so these next two slides, I'll quickly go over. And this is kind of the, the best way that I like to say what we do, which is our core functions or core services as a chamber, is broken down into providing peace of mind to our business community. And I like using this acronym one because it sounds fun. But the second is because it helps me stay on track in exploiting this too. The P in peace of mind is providing regulatory and problem-solving assistance. So often when a business runs into issues, they'll usually reach out to us to complain about it. It could be a city issue where we've had someone call us and say, I showed up and there was a sign on my door saying that the water is being repaired and fixed and now I can't even open my business. What the heck do I do? Or it could be something as major as a business that we have here that was operating internationally. Their IP address was compromised and they went into court at the Spanish level and they needed support on an international level from a local entity. And so we stepped in, providing them those documentations and the information that they needed, allowing them to win that lawsuit and subsequently contracts overseas. So that's kind of on the, providing them with problem-solving and regulatory support. Not everything we can provide a solution to, but we work to collaborate with others that have those answers for them, provide them the guidance, or sometimes provide them with who they should go to so that they can get those issues resolved. The E is providing economic and community development support. And this generally focuses, of course, we work with our city. We work with our counties, private, and even the public side of economic development. But we add to that with some of the services that we do. This touches more on tourism efforts that we have. It also touches on business support for those that are coming into our community, are looking to expand here. It also touches those residents that are looking to move to our area and collecting data and information on cost of living and pricing and components that allowed them to make that informed decision. And then the final piece of this is the workforce development. It also is the shop local to ensure that the dollars that continue to come to our community are reinvested in those city amenities and services. The A in peace of mind is advocacy and public policy. And this is actually such a unique group that I could be presenting to because most of the time when I talk about this, no one cares. But you guys are spending your evenings almost every Monday talking policy. So as I reiterated at the start of this, we were founded on the premise of, of ensuring that we have a voice, of ensuring that our businesses have a voice. And so we're always operating on a pro-business approach. City, state, and federal level, getting involved with different working groups here at the city. We've been fortunate to partner with you all as you've created those stakeholder groups, all the way to forums that we have opportunities for the, that one-on-one community involvement, like those legislative tours that we have. At the state level, I shared with you that we do have two contract lobbyists. So we're pretty active during the state legislative session, taking positions of support, oppose, penning different letters, emailing different committee members or testifying as necessary. The, it's the whole gamut and it's designed to be that way because all levels of government affect the operation and the ability for our businesses to thrive. Then of course, because the federal has so many different components to it, we are very selective on what we get behind and lay our voice into. Our government affairs is, is a huge decider around what we do take on. So things like the infrastructure reform bill, most recently, that was passed was one that we had yielded support on. Things like the corporate income tax was one that we voiced opposition against. And we took that a step further by even writing op-eds and issuing other statements. So those are the initial core functions. There's another slide that touches on the C and E. The C is providing connections. And this is often what a lot of folks think of when they think of chambers. It's those events that we have, it's those programs that we host. In a normal calendar year, we have about 200 programs and events that we offer. And it's always to connect either business to business, business to the community, or business to government. Those are the audiences and why we create those opportunities and events. During COVID, that was a little bit weird and I'll touch on those here in a little bit. But we're back to a full calendar here for 2022, including our social events that are kicked back off as early as tomorrow with newer programs like our policy and pancakes on the first Friday of the month. And a quick shout out to a couple of our mayor pro tem and councillor Emmons and Seymour that were able to make it to a few of those already. And then the E in peace of mind is providing education. We're of course always here to try and streamline everything. And the world of news at your fingertips and over 300 feet of information that you go through on a daily basis, our businesses are inundated with a lot. And especially as they try to navigate. We try and make sure that we are providing them with the information that's most relevant. So from newsletters that we have, to keeping updated on our website, to all the social media platforms that we leverage and make available to them, to mastermind programs that we've kicked off to support them with professional and educational development. Next slide, please. I'll have you all read this one on your own because I'm not one to read verbatim off of the slides. So I'll keep this paused while I give you some quick numbers because this is the fun part. So over 2020 and 2021, I've captured a few of the programs that we were able to do. We were able to host in total four shop local campaigns. So when COVID first unfolded, we had hosted our own one as a chamber. And then we did partner with our city on our regular We Love Westy Sweepstakes that we have every year. It's an annual program to encourage people to shop, dine, or do business locally. Some of those numbers, because 2020 and 2021 were actually incredibly close, they overlapped in the same year. In total, we had a sales revenue to our business community of about 330,000, which broke down into about 28,400 in sales tax to the city. We did hold job fairs throughout 2020, about 70 combined virtual participants, featuring Amazon, Kroger, Heartland, and other top employers in the area as well. We created educational programs for our overall business and overall community as well. Those programs were not only webinars, but they were those live broadcasts that allowed you all to hop on other elected officials to share what was going on, ways they can pivot their business. And I'll give a quick plug. I know our mayor quickly touched on recycling and maybe there's something that folks can be educated more about. This is an area that we are passionate about as well. And we actually held about two webinars that focused specifically on sustainability and recycling because there was so much food waste that was go-a-god during COVID. Our live broadcast did reach on a weekly basis over 2,500 on, on a consistent engaged level. We also had volunteers continue to make calls. They surveyed those participants. Very early on, we took that feedback and actually emailed the city those results, which helped in creating those outdoor grant or outdoor permits to be able to operate and even the initial Westy Rise Grant opportunity that was there. We had produced an open list for our restaurants and kicked off other programs like Senior Smiles to help engage with those seniors that were isolated in their retirement communities, masks, sewing, and other needs that were going on. Distributing PPE between October and December of 2020. Then again, November and December of 2021. We were a part of about eight other communities in 2020 that distributed PPE. And I could tell you, we actually took over about 26% of that distribution, which is broken down into about like 40, I think it was 5,000 wipes, 3,500 in, in different gloves. It's 3,500, 5,000, 8,000, 3,200. So we actually had a number of our Westminster businesses that did end up using that. We participated in stakeholder meetings and guideline development, including variance application. So trying to ensure some of even our kind of entertainment-type venues were still able to open and operate when they were limited and couldn't per the guidelines. We even provided direct feedback on those guidelines, especially when we looked at gyms that were restricted on opening and were told that they had to have groups of people outside in the freezing cold, less than nine people, et cetera. So we really did try and provide that input, again, based on the feedback that we were hearing from our business community. We also were able to distribute our own mini-grants, about 250,000 in funds. These were provided, of course, in our partnership with Addis County, about 250 applicants that had applied through. And again, this was one that we were one of the highest only municipalities, single municipalities that had applicants apply in that large volume. We were able to give about 100 grants during that time that covered rent, covered compliance, winterization, and a lot of other great needs that they were facing. We communicated information from counties, from our city. We did that through our website. We also did it through COVID digest emails, which is what we had branded them, to educate our businesses on those guidelines that continue to change and develop. We had right out the gate, so very early on in the initial few months, we had over 50,000 page views on that, on that COVID page. And that actually doubled in 2021. So we had a number of people turn to that as a resource. We continue to lead by example through creative programming. And this is also one of the things that we love priding ourselves on, our ability to be agile. We hosted socially-distanced after-hours. So think of speed networking in your vehicles where you'd come up to another car and there would be another one beside you. Again, trying to create this environment where social, emotional, and mental support was there for our businesses. And then any funds that we raised, we actually gave back to those restaurants. We did drive-by ribbon cuttings to encourage people to continue to open their business, to expand on their business even during that time. Again, cutting the ribbon while cars just came by like a Kinsenera. If you haven't been there, you're, you've missed out. But it was with a lot of horns and a lot of cars passing through to raise the spirit, raise the morale, and support those businesses that we're opening. In addition to that, around police and fire, we also did stop by a couple of different fire stations and, and were able to donate to them as well and show some appreciation with some lunches and dinners that they can have. And we also held safety seminars with our police department. We saw a number of breakheads that were happening at our businesses, some thefts, some issues around some loitering that was taking place. And so we worked with our PD to host business safety seminars, a number of them, so that we can educate our businesses on ways that they can try and mitigate that and get some of those answers taken care of for them. So last month, our Board of Directors for the chamber went ahead and approved our strategic plan. So giving you kind of what's ahead out of this kind of approach that we took to shape the direction of our organization, we did prioritize areas of need that we had. And so these are kind of, there's no particular order, but I've done my best to summarize this for you all to be aware of. So working on outreach to incorporate our residents into our work, not just our businesses that make up our business community, the creation of a framework to support those startup businesses that are here. We're also focused on staffing challenges within our businesses, which we will incorporate with our area school districts as a pipeline for students to enter the workforce. We're remaining community-minded, remembering that our community's health is our best gauge of our own success. We continue to deliver those community signature events. The five that I alluded to earlier on, our awards gala, which we've partnered with the city on in the past, our Taste of Westminster, our State of the City, which does feature our mayor and updates on what's going on in our community, our shop local campaign, and of course, our Muts and Struts Outdoor Health and Wellness Event, which this year we will also be featuring the PD as a part of. We will continue to strengthen our state advocacy and local education of the process to folks, to convene leaders for economic vitality through various that we have planned, and providing superior value to our members and continuing to grow in community representation. And, and of course, revitalizing our tourism efforts because COVID did a huge number, not just on our retail and restaurant, but even on that industry as well. So with that, I'll go ahead and move to the next slide, which is a quick thank you for hearing me go through this in a very quick time period. And I'll see if there are any questions for me.
Which, which camera, both? Good evening, Juliette. Thanks for being here. Quick question for you. You were at the town hall meeting on Thursday. I'm sorry, that was redundant. You were at the town hall. And the number one topic, I believe, was, was the homeless discussion. How do you see the chamber assisting businesses and assisting the city? Because as the mayor mentioned, we need everyone to be our eyes and ears as we towards this. What are your thoughts there?
Thank you so much for that, that question, Councilor Seymour. This is an important topic. I was there. I thought that was a great meeting, by the way. So kudos to everyone that put that together. And, and for our mayor for keeping everyone in order and the timing moving forward. I think there is a huge role that we can work together on this and in, in, in working more collaboratively and letting, communicating with one another as things are coming up. But more important, communicating also with our businesses on action that they can be taking to try and position themselves as best as possible to not only open themselves up to be more vulnerable, but the steps that they can do, whether it's the signage that they can have on there and ways to enforce that, ways to be more safe. I can tell you, Councilor Seymour, in the last couple of weeks, and I've shared this with our city manager, Andrews, when he and I just met, we've had a number of complaints. And, and the complaints are, I can't detail them right now because of just how, how in-depth they are. But it is very disturbing that a lot of our businesses are having to deal with some of the things that they are. And so I, I think a big part of it is listening to what's going on. I think it's great that you guys are adding the second navigator that's there and, and ways that we can empower them and support them. But in also trying to tackle it together uniformly as residential community, which is where I see a lot of our city being invested and involved in. And then where our businesses can also have that symbiotic relationship, which is where we can step in. So I hope that answers your question a little bit vaguely. We have a few ideas that are on our radar that I'm happy to go in more depth on at a later point in time.
Thank you.
Juliette, thanks a million for being with us. Go drink about 24 ounces of water.
Thank you.
And thanks for being with us tonight. Sorry we took too long to get to you.
That's okay. It's all right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I only missed seeing you in person.
Us too. Talk to you later.
Thank you. Bye.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I knew she needed to be gone by 7:30.
Yeah, it works.
Okay, so back to Dr. Cog.
Okay.
All right, so I was talking about health. And one of the other things that Dr. Cog is looking at doing is they're being recruited to form a new accountable care organization, which would also allow them to access more federal Medicare dollars for this time around. And to targeted areas, they would do assessments, work with communities to do assessments to identify, are there unique areas that need additional level of services? They gave an example of Commerce City has like one in five of their elderly has a disability. So helps them kind of add on, tack on to services. They also brought up a potential to do a joint purchasing program with a couple of other COGS in the Midwest. That one was interesting. You know, I think we were all kind of wondering what does that entail? They say it could give us more access to collective buying power. These groups, these COGS have already negotiated deals with lots of different, they said 7,200 products and services and over 1,200 vendors. And well, of course, we have our own negotiated contracts that could potentially help communities save money. It might be more useful for rural communities versus ours, but who knows? And they, I just, I think they're going to be updating their, yeah, they're going to be doing a five-year strategic plan for sustainability for the region. So that's another piece that they're going to be moving forward on. There are some in Metro Vision, some guiding principles that were established in the latest round of Metro Vision. And that's what would be leading them. And so, and finally, they are expanding, I'm giving you the clip. But I think it's really interesting because there's a lot of different things that they're pursuing. They are expanding regional partnerships for data. So that is, you know, as we look at trying to get more information tailored for the types of things that we're trying to address, whether that's water or housing needs or whatever the case may be, to have common data sets so all of us can share. And that can even help us in terms of having first responders kind of coordinate between different adjacent communities so that we're working off the same GIS systems and we can more adeptly communicate with one another and support one another. And one final thing that they did spend some time on at the end was addressing the fact that the federal government is, you know, kind of now tied in addition to our, when we look at our transportation funds, that we not only look at land use, but we now should be looking at housing. And so they are in the process of just kind of gathering input from all of the communities to see, well, what might that entail? And so it's not necessarily, as Council Baker kind of alluded to, like controlling housing or doing anything like that. It's more, what would you guys be open to? And so they took some initial survey questions down and then they'll be getting back to all of us on giving us the results of just some of the input that they've been getting. So that'll be a couple of weeks from now and make sure that's shared amongst everybody. Just see where all the cities are going, because I will tell you that was, there was quite a diversity of opinion on how and where. And I think that's going to be something challenging for them to navigate.
Question, does staff give back to you with what's on agendas and stuff?
For the Dr. Cog meetings? Yeah.
Yeah, they did for me. And when I was on there, that just helped because we don't know what all they're working on. And so to give advice helps.
It is very helpful.
Who else have any reports?
Just an update from the North Metro Arts Alliance. The Love Across the USA yarn mural project is coming to Westminster. They're co-sponsoring the project and it's being crocheted by 50 women across the USA. And it will be at, it will be hosted at the MAC. The mural was designed by a young boy in Ukraine. And it will be on, at the MAC on April 7th and 8th. And, oh, sorry, it will be put together on April 7th and 8th and then for display on, starting April 9th. So if you have an opportunity, go and see the display at the MAC.
I had environmental advisory board. So a couple of things that they had talked about, they had talked about, I guess, this has been going on for some time that the group wants to expand their bylaws. So maybe that's something that staff could circulate with council, because I believe that if they did that, we'd have to, I think we'd have to prove that, because that one's something that would have to go through us. The other thing they asked about was onboarding, because we usually have that onboarding, but Abby did give them an answer that that would probably be in June. They, we discussed briefly about our strat plan and how it might, you know, drive what they're doing and just kind of that whole concept. I kind of sensed this is the first time that they've met since I've been their liaison. And there were some members out of that group that voiced concern about us putting a pause on the appointments. I explained to them kind of my view of it, so they could talk to any of you if they wanted your particular opinion. But kind of shared where that was and where we're going and that there was a general consensus around how the strat plan really needs to drive what our groups do. They talked about a handful of different ideas that they had, some of which I had never heard of before. One of the particular ones that there was a lot of interest in was I guess at some point, Excel approached former mayor Atchison about potentially getting land to do some sort of community solar garden. And they were told that that wasn't something we had. You know, they wanted to look at that again, and I told the group, maybe it's something that could be rethought. I mean, the city has lots of buildings and things like that. Solar can go just about anywhere anymore. So they had a, what were some of the other, that kind of fed into basically its solar co-ops, how low income folks could benefit from those kind of offerings. They talked, one of the people said, you know, the city, I know that like if you look at, his idea was around, a lot of the car dealerships now are being forced to have the coverings because of hail damage. And so, you know, potentially maybe that's something that something that we could get some offsetting savings on our insurance by covering our vehicles. Then they did talk about education around fire risk. I let them know that the chiefs were here and encouraged them to listen to that meeting. And then we had a speaker who also showed up at the town hall that was the neighbor from the house that exploded. I think that potentially she's making, kind of making rounds because she wants to make sure that we understand her concerns. And she really spoke on an environmental impact about the asbestos that she stated. And I don't know enough to know, you know, how true or not true it is. But she talked about that with the group and asked them if they knew. And she actually asked us about what we're doing to communicate some of the educational pieces around environmental stuff to people who English isn't their first language. So I knew that for sure, I've shared with her that in the past, I know if they went through the clerk's office, that we would provide interpreters so that she was aware of that. That might be something that we, another educational opportunity, so that folks know that's a service the city provides. And real quick, just because I didn't hear you specifically pointing out on your list of things on here. And I know that maybe this goes into our next section. What if, I do want us to, as a group, talk about whether or not there's support, because we've heard it a lot, for looking at some sort of reestablished work week hours that, and I've heard different ideas, whether it's you split the workforce and some people work still Monday through Thursday. Then you have other people working shifts that cover maybe through Saturday or something, because I think we've heard that from the community and the mayor had that listed on here. So I think the group should talk about whether or not that's something.
One of my friends talked to Jody about it, about especially for Friday, Saturday and Sunday for us. And he reminded me of something and I said he needed to reiterate.
Yep. Yep, so for city council, if there's something urgent that arises on the weekend, please text me. That's the very best way to get in touch with me. Email is kind of a passive communication form, especially on the weekends. And it's very difficult to monitor the emails seven days a week. But texting or phoning me is the best way to get me and then we'll have that discussion. And then I can contact the appropriate staff to deal with the situation. Now, if it's a police matter, of course, I always phone the police if it's a police matter. But other matters that require staff attention over the weekends, please contact me directly. And if there's any other arrangements, I'll communicate those ahead of time that weekend. But use that as a way, not rely, at least on Saturdays and Sundays, on email as the way to get actions acted on.
I appreciate that reminder. I think specifically for me, because like, you know, I'm no one who fears calling any of you if I have something I want addressed soon. But if you think about the organization and the fact that we're a service organization, working class folks might not be able to contact, say, our water department or if they're working through a building permit thing that, you know, they only have their weekend to do. And I know that in the past, there's been some adjustment around like building permits and stuff, so that there's some people available. But I think that, you know, we need to rethink, in my view, we need to rethink that, because that's when people have the time to do those kinds of things and deal with bills. I can tell you, it's one of the most frustrating things if you have somebody say you owe money, but they'll only talk to you till four o'clock in the afternoon, when you're trying to earn money to pay them. So I think that, you know, there's been a fair amount of feedback around that. And I don't think that we need to have the whole organization open, you know, every day of the week. But there's certain components that, in my opinion, we need to at least figure out how we address and make the government more accessible to the people that pay for it.
Anyone else?
On that one? Can we poll on that one?
We're going to be polling. Monday through Saturday?
Well, I thought we already discussed that as part of our strat plan too.
I kind of folded in, but there were a couple of things that I didn't specifically spelled out.
Are we going to wait till strat plan?
Yeah, let's see what comes out of there. And then Bruce, remind me if we don't get that answer. I got all my signatures ready for Thursday. All right, take a five minute break.
No running.
The insurance guy.
Okay, we are back and welcome to our very done crew. Thank you.
Hello, good to be back.
So what are we going to do tonight?
Sharon, we are going to walk through the work that we've been doing with staff to refine some of the objectives that you put together. Oh, there we go. And it would pop up eventually.
There it is.
And also some of the focused objective work that they did. So you'll see this document that's in front of you and up on the screen. We've got your council strategic objectives that you worked through and developed, most of them. There are a couple of those objectives that you see in blue or any wording that's in blue. Those are recommendations that staff has either asked you consider incorporating into your plan or just some word changes that they're asking to address. I think we'll go through those.
I was with that man.
Yeah.
And what are the pink ones?
The pink ones are where I have marked. There are also a couple that staff thought would be better placed as a focused staff objective and then they provided a broader council objective that are asking for your recommendations around switching those two. I think we'll walk through those first and then we'll go through the rest of the objectives. And I know Mayor Protem Demat, you said you had a couple of questions about some specifics. We'll see if there's anything missing that you'd like to add. Anything that you're like, nope, this does not fit at all with what we see for the plan. And then if we have time, we can get into some of how I started developing some recommended performance measures.
Shannon, do you want to increase the size a little bit bigger on the screen?
I can, especially after their comments were on tiny font. I saw it and I was like, oh. Right. You know, I just swinced when you said that.
No, it's okay. Yours are plus eight, theirs are minus fifteen.
I'm older than you. All right, so we've laid them out around your priorities. So we have each priority and then your priority goal statement that you developed. All of that language you've already approved, adopted, nothing in that has been changed. So the first council objective mitigate risks to natural and built environment through updated policies, procedures and plans. No changes to that. The second one, staff is recommending and it's kind of to consolidate some of the more focused staff objectives that they would like to see that really will underlie some of the additional work and goals throughout the plan. And this would be to enhance the organizational culture of excellence that focuses on recruiting, engaging and retaining an exemplary workforce. Reactions to that one.
I think that's especially important right now. It's so hard to hire.
Anyone?
I have no concerns about that and Councilor Melo is right right now. You know, we're in a rebuilding and finding, so it's best to start the good foundation.
When I read this, it was somebody coming. I don't think you would want to read to see that.
Excellent. Great. All right. The next recommended revisions are under priority number two for your proactive public safety. And the first recommendation is a language change. We originally had to institute public safety practices that promote customer service transparency and trust. Staff is asking to have a continuum there because there are some ongoing things that they're doing operationally. And they just like to recognize the fact that some of this work is really ongoing.
That's fine.
All right. So the next one over, I'm going to go to the right hand column. The one that says continue to enhance recruitment and retention strategies for our public safety workforce to ensure that Westminster remains where it comes. So there's a decision point we have or maintains a desired place of employment. So this was something, yep, please go.
And I normally wouldn't object to something like that because I understand the intent. However, in my opinion, we, by saying continued enhance, I feel like we don't acknowledge that we have room to improve in this particular section. And I want there to be clear understanding that there's a new direction and that we understand we have problems we have to clean up. And that's my concern about doing that. So I'm open to what everybody else thinks, but that's my concern, which normally I wouldn't care.
If it's like ensure recruitment and retention strategies for our public safety workforce for Westminster is or makes Westminster a desired place of employment. I wouldn't say like remains, becomes, maintains, I would say is. But in that way, it's more directed to
I like ensure.
Do this, kind of moving some of the language around.
Don't you just cut out continue and say, like an appoint to enhance recruitment?
Yeah, well, enhance ensure, better do it.
I'm open to that. I'm open to staff. I mean, obviously that was a staff request. So curious, Mr. Andrew's thoughts on it.
I think part of it is because of the suite of enhancements that have already been done that this would recognize that and then build on that, continue to build on those enhancements. But that would be it.
Yeah, and you could also really put in some solid performance measures that are metric based to really show improvement over whatever existing is. If you want to look at retention statistics specifically for your public safety services and add metrics around, you want to de-increase retention by X percent over the course of the next two to five years. You can build in some pretty solid metrics that still recognize there are some enhanced improvements that have been done, but also room for growth. There's always going to be room for growth.
Right. If you just use the word enhance, it wouldn't suggest that something didn't happen before. It would just say we're going to continue to do that.
To that point for metrics, I mean, I'm a little taken back, a little disappointed that some of those weren't included in this as far as what staff is thinking. As far, I mean, if you already thought of it as an objective, there should be some kind of thought as to what you're trying to meet in the objective, even if it might get cut in the long run or it might be enhanced by council. I just feel like there's some missing pieces.
We could certainly, and one of the things we had planned on doing for measures last week in our session as well as refining all of these. But we really wanted to make sure that staff was in agreement and that we had these really well fleshed out and that we had some that really clearly matched the priorities and your objectives. So I've got, and hopefully I think we'll have time to get to those, a bunch of recommended performance metrics, some of which speak to these ones that we're talking about right now.
Because all I'm having trouble with is I'm not sure. I know we've put in bonuses. I don't know what we've done for retention. So I don't know what we're doing right now to fix what we fixed.
We can bring back another update on the police plan of action. One of the things we did in January was compress the pay scale. That was one of the retention moves and such. But there's a list. Another one was improved communication within the department and those kinds of protocols are under enhancement. But yeah, there's, and we're still looking at continuing measures as well. The feedback we've received on the pay scale compression has been pretty significant in terms of positive retention and also attraction move. But it wasn't the only one that we get positive feedback on.
There also something like just better clarity and promotion.
I'm going to be blunt about this just because I want to understand why it's important to acknowledge that and opposed to saying that we're trying to move the needle for you folks. Like, who's hurt by not having continue in there? Does that, I mean, does it really hurt some level of the organization in a way that I don't understand?
I admit, yeah, I think we maybe on our side, maybe make you too big a point of it. It was just a wording suggestion from the leadership team that there was a series of hands-on sessions that they all went through this. And I think our human resource people were also involved in the discussion. The HR work that has been happening. But I would say if council wants to change this, absolutely. I would take it back to say enhance and we can.
I like it to just say enhance recruitment and prove the continue to, if there's three other people who agree.
Don't you like ensure?
Could you ensure also is fine with me?
I like ensure better than the name.
Ensure works for me.
I was going to change the ensure and you can't have it twice.
Yeah, I can refine it. We like enhance or ensure.
I think we would with ensure.
All right.
And I heard another suggestion, instead of using remains, becomes or maintains, just use the word is.
That's good.
All right. And then is everyone okay with switching? Because that was originally one of council's broad objectives. And staff has put that into their focused objective.
Can you tell me what that means as far as tracking it for us, though? Because I mean, this is a big priority for us. So I don't mind you. I mean, obviously you're the ones who really have to take ownership. But I just want the accountability piece to be to us that, you know, we take this pretty serious. This was a big discussion for the majority of council.
I think that both your council broad objectives and your focused staff objectives are going to show up in the strategic plan.
Okay.
Yeah, they're both going to be listed in there as well as whichever performance metrics you think are going to tell that story.
As long as we still have to hold accountability, I don't care then.
It would be like two A B or whatever.
I'm not trying to think of the training piece. I don't see that in here and that's what's got to change. I mean, that to me is what why people were not here for 12 weeks and different things happened. Different kinds of training for the world that we're living in to me is key. And is that happening or isn't it happening? I have no clue.
And I think for that, though, unless you disagree, I think that's Jody where that bulleted point is going to come in handy. So we understand what things you're doing in these specifically, these ones that we have put, you know, big priority on. Because I imagine some of that's in there. If it's not, we probably have some suggestions. But I mean, I imagine that each of these has like a, here's the bulleted action list of what we're going to do to make this happen, right?
There's a pretty detailed, because even these focused staff objectives, we really consolidated a lot of, much like council did, individual information and ideas around what the objectives could be very specifically. So yes, training can be a bullet point that has performance metrics associated with that umbrella. The next one was also a switch requested by staff. The one that you see in a focused objective used to be one that council came up with on their column to increase the uncommissioned public safety services by leveraging positions such as co-responders and homeless navigators. That was one that had a little bit of rewording with it as well. We added that such as co-responders and homeless navigators truly points specifically to it.
Missing a big, big thing that we talked a fair amount about and it is a new thing. So these are great as far as enhancing. I think we've even already given direction to increase the co-responder program. But what is not in here that I know we clearly had support for is to have the non-sworn report writers. And I don't see that in there, but I want to make sure it's actually reflective as a part of that bullet or one of these bullets. And I know, I believe that was even in the police plan that you guys did that big report a couple of years ago, that that was a potential recommendation, but we put priority behind it.
We just add that as a comma, co-responders, homeless navigators and
non-sworn report writers.
Well, I didn't think we had homeless navigators.
Not in that.
Not originally, no.
That part.
So why is it back in?
We gave direction two weeks, three weeks ago.
Well, that, well, that direction was just to bring us a report that if that would be helpful.
No, we gave direction to add an additional one and then to report back on what the findings from the second one was. It was kind of an in-between because I think you made a good point that night about, is it working? And so we said, okay, add another one and then let's look at metrics and see, did it work? Before we say we want to add more, that it wasn't bringing more homeless versus helping people get out of homelessness.
Well, I think the key word here is leveraging positions. It's not necessarily asking for more. It's saying leverage what we have.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of my point. So it doesn't, we specifically wanted pointed out that we wanted to add that.
Happy with that one? For the next one, and I think this was probably, this one will be a point for discussion. Suggesting a broader council objective, connect the city's vulnerable populations with local, regional, state and national resources. And then there are two more focused staff objectives, both around partnering with agencies and researching best practices around helping people experience homeless, people who are experiencing homelessness. Now, that was something that was discussed back and forth at the retreat, but not necessarily something that made it onto.
Random first.
I don't want this at all. I don't want it at all. I don't know where it came from. I don't consider it homelessness. I consider it trespassing, trespassing that we aren't doing anything about.
That's part of the spectrum.
I think there was a clear delineation, though, between the majority of council about having some level of something in there. And that's back to our meeting we had two weeks ago. We gave direction to increase what we're doing. So, and I mean, I understand your point and where you're at, but I don't think that that's where the majority was. I think that there was some agreement about there being a line, but.
I would, I would be okay with that if we added another box. And this is, this was a big part of our discussion that we had, not all in agreement, I understand. But then, you know, creating that continuum that we do A, we do B, we do C, and C is thank you very much for. we do A, we do B, we do C, and C is thank you very much for leading our city. And how we enforce that and how we go about that. So that, that, the only way I would feel comfortable with these two new boxes is if we had a third box that said, here's, you know, the, the plan that we're working on here, here is creating a continuum of movement to then X amount of days, X amount of hours trespass these people if we're not at that point. However, we want to call that, whatever we want to do so that we have an end in mind, so that we're not in this endless circle of, of. Our residents were pretty clear last Thursday too. So.
And I hundred percent agree. And I think it was, you've said it a lot of times, a continuum. We need a starting point and an ending point, and it needs to be succinct and it needs to be the same every time somebody goes through it. One of the other things that I've got some feedback, um, from the community as well as some folks who used to work for us is around how we're handling kind of that, that process. And so some good points were made to me that I put forward to the group is, um, for example, um, I don't want our cops going out when it becomes freezing, having to find folks in hopes that they don't freeze. Like that's not their job. And it's, it sounds callous, but it's not like, there's other things that they should be doing. If they see somebody, great. But the idea of them going out and searching, uh, the city doesn't make sense to me. I think that we need to, um, there needs some, to be some accountability for the folks who, um, benefit from some of the services we're trying to connect them to. The, um, sorry, it's not like her to call much of this in meetings, that kind of worries me. So putting some accountability on them to actually say, here's, if you want those vouchers, here's where you come. And understanding exactly how that works and whose responsibility it is and, you know, what those programs are. Um, I don't even fully understand what they are. Like who's, who's the liability go on if we go to a hotel and say, let's stay with three, who makes sure that they leave, you know, when that night's over? Is that an extra burden on the police department? Um, so I'd like to understand what that portion is and actually have a system that is putting some accountability back on people. And we're not just frankly chasing people around the city, trying to give them a handout. Um, and that's not to sound again, mean, but you know, we, we went and visited some camps and we saw some people on separate sites of the spectrum. Some who looked like they were clearly probably under the influence of something and didn't know that you were talking to them. Versus someone who would admittedly seem like he really wanted help. He really wanted to get out of it. He had done some time. He was having a hard time finding work and getting out of it. He had his area nice and neat. He seemed to irritate him and other people didn't. Doesn't mean that he should still get the camp in our open space. We still have rules and laws, but I think that we need to do a better job about what exactly these programs are and having, if we're gonna do it, be more succinct. And you start here and that also has got to come with some sort of tracking because how else are we gonna know that we're not catching them from one camp to the next? Which we literally saw this weekend. One of the tents that popped up next to this guy was one that we just evicted from Donald Street. Or mitigated or whatever word you want to use. So, um, I'm like Councilor Seymour, this is good as long as you you gotta have that full picture of what that continuum is because people do expect us to take care of the problem.
Same point about, um, if we do trespass folks, like congratulations to now, I don't know, name your neighboring city resident. And, um, so it would be helpful to make sure that we don't end up, um, sending them to our beta and then like a week later they're back and are they going through the continuum again? And then, you know, so what happens when we do, you know, um, like what, what is that end result and is it effective? So I think tracking that and I think some of the best practices is just sort of having names and tracking, you know? Yeah, so.
Just if I may a side note on that, I do know that, you know, our officers know all their names.
Yeah.
So, and then I'm sure our navigator has all the statistics about. So it would be nice to see that, but yeah, that, yeah. Agreed.
Just so you both know, um, yeah, I think it was last week, we had a meeting and after an hour and a half, it was just crystal clear. We had no communication and we didn't have protocols. We had nothing in place. So those are the two things that have to happen in order for anything to happen. And they're jumping on it and working on it diligently. They, they have done a yeoman's job even in a week. So, um, it, it just was crystal clear and listening for an hour and a half. Everybody shared pieces, but there wasn't clear communication of starting with like the, um, the officers of dispatch, what they say, and then how that goes out. And, uh, and from the lady I talked to today, she's been calling the police department every day. And I said, that's the wrong person to start with. And so as soon as we get everything in place and can get it out through our own system to the community, um, people will better understand how the process works and know who to call, when to call, how to call. So, um,
Add on to what's been said, I think maybe a missing piece of this is, I'd like to see us focus on it broader, on a broader perspective as far as policy. Uh, because I believe that bad actions happen because of bad policy. And I think that we need to have our eye on legislation at the state level. Cause I think that that certainly affects the homeless population. Uh, I also think much to what the mayor said is to develop and publish our prop process and our protocols on the matter. Because I think that that's, uh, important, not only for council to then, council and staff to stand by and say, here's how we're accountable to you and here's how we're accountable to, uh, those we're helping. But I think that if it's published, it's a, it's a commitment that we, that we need to make. So.
And we've been trying for eight years. We've got a Christian faith-based community that has, they have showers, they have gymnasiums, they have parking lots that right now they're, um, signed up to be in the Colorado safe parking. So that people with cars but no place to stay, they're staying in their cars can park. And yet to let them indoors to either not cook during the summer and to have a cool place to be or to be able to be in, in the nighttime when it's freezing and not freeze to death. It's our codes keeping that from happening. And so my question to us ourselves is how do we make it happen on short-term basis? That's all they're asking for. Um, they don't want anything long-term, but how do we do it? Not we can't do it.
I think what I find frustrating, this was not in our strategic plan. And now two months later, it gets put into our strategic plan. I find that very frustrating. It's like, what did we do all to work with the strategic plan and make all the compromises and have all the discussions? I think what I find really objectionable is singling out part of our citizens to help. We're only going to connect the vulnerable population? Should we, should we be serving all of our population? And really connecting them to the federal, state and government services that could be beneficial to them? We, it's we're on just a single, we should serve the entire population. And I really don't want any of this at all. We can do this. You know, we've all sort of agreed to do this. But I don't think it should be in our strategic plan. I think our plan should be something much more focused than this. So.
Just, just what my one last thought too is that, um, you know, this, this is proactive public safety and, and, you know, this is a living document. I hate to use that. A lot of things have changed just in the last few weeks too. And so, um, you know, I, I mentioned that I've, what we've talked about too is, is, um, protecting and defending our open spaces, trails and our residents. And so that's the proactive part. Then you could put under that, okay, how are we gonna do it with our new staff plan? That's, that's my two cents.
Can we just cut out vulnerable and just have populations?
I think.
I think vulnerable.
Well, I wouldn't want it at all, but that'd be.
I, I see your point. I mean, I don't disagree with you, but.
Well, look at the Spanish Oaks people that came to us. They weren't vulnerable, but they were angry over what was happening.
They felt violated. So they were vulnerable at that point. It's, it's an overused word.
And we wanna, and we wanna go, we just don't wanna help the people at Spanish Oaks. We wanna help the people there and there and there. And we shouldn't have to make them come up and yell at us.
Right. Well, this, um, you know, can I imagine all of us sitting here don't need to have this level of assistance and the whole term of vulnerable is just populations that need access to resources because of some level, they're vulnerable to mental or, you know, financial or other issues. And that's what's put them in that place. So I don't, I have no objection to using a commonly used word for, um, this industry and for this realm. So.
Well, I think part of the, I think partly too is that one of the key pieces that we did talk about in our strategic plan is connecting to resources that aren't city-based, right? And so I think that if we take out the vulnerable population, it contains our efforts to connect to those resources that aren't primarily city service-based, if that makes sense. So I, I can see if we just, and I understand, we've had a whole strategic plan based on words. So, um, so I can see why it can, can trip people up, but, uh, I think if it, if it meets kind of what you're looking for, I think it meets both ways. If we just cut out vulnerable, because I think city government is, is there to serve all populations, no matter who you are. And then it provides that, that equity base as far as your problem isn't more than this problem over here.
Yeah. And I don't like, uh, typecasting people. Everybody has a moment of vulnerable in their life. Everybody could be one paycheck away from pitching a tent in our open space and that's reality. So I think we should be accessing those things no matter where people are. I don't, I don't, I don't subscribe to always looking at people and saying, that's, this person is that way. They're at that stage. I mean, that's, life is full of different stages and so I, I wouldn't be open to moving that word out.
Be okay with taking vulnerable out and making this?
Can I have captured enough with the discussion we've had here? I'll add another focused objective based on the conversation to cover.
There were, sorry, um, there were two though. There was the established continuum.
Yep.
Uh, for enforcement to start accountability. There was a second one, which was around legislative policy at a larger level. So we.
Capital for those. I've got them. We've got a ton of notes in here. Yeah, we'll probably have more than one box.
Might have three.
Yeah. All right. Jody, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Right, already number three. So this one, uh, the first council objective, staff had some recommendation for revised wording. So you have ensure the continuation of a diverse mix of community-oriented events and programs that make Westminster unique and contribute to placemaking initiatives throughout the city. This one originally had, uh, as one of the examples, movie nights. Westy Fest was another specific example listed in there. They broadened it out and then added that ending to include place making.
We spent a lot of time talking about not wanting to use the trendy words and place making to me is one of those feels nice. And I, I don't know, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna not fall on the sword over it or anything. I just don't see that it's necessary. And for that.
I'm, I'm for keeping it. I mean, it has a utility because we want some, one of the things that has been, um, you know, bugging Westminster for like 10 plus years or, or more. It's like, we never felt like we had a strong identity. And I think through place making and identifying who Westminster is.
I've lived here my whole life and I know people with their whole life and I just don't subscribe to that. I don't understand it.
Sarah was just channeling Bob Briggs.
There you go.
No, that was for Bob.
Oh.
I will say that I do like place making. It seems community oriented to me. Um, I understand the, the edge of it being a trendy word. Um, but place making makes it seem like to a point that when you go to Stanley Lake, you know you're at Stanley Lake. And when you, um, go to, um, any part of our city, you know where you are. And I, I just feel like that's, that to me, and maybe it's, I don't know, maybe I'm just in that mix, but I, I do like place making. It just seems community oriented to me.
Why can't we just have that make Westminster unique throughout the city?
Fine with that.
Just make Westminster unique. I, I, uh, this one doesn't bother me either way. So.
Place making shows up in a couple, a couple of other places.
Donald's words are terrible. We can, you know.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean anything to me.
I think what, just a trend that I'm seeing doing this across the country is, um, cities, both leadership in the, in the city government departments themselves and city councils trying to find words that mean something to residents. So if I'm the average resident, I don't know what place making is. So if you can use plain language to convey what it is you're trying to do, that's better. The goal would be to have anybody pick up the plan and understand what it is that you're trying to do.
Alls I've heard is people just wanna feel like a community. Oh, maybe it could be in programs that make Westminster unique and contribute to community throughout the city.
Unique's a good word.
Are we cutting the backend?
The only thing I, you know, I would just suggest we add over in the focus objective part. It's just a nod to like culture, different cultural or, um, being, you know, trying to be representative of our community, that these are buried in content slash experience and culture that is representative of our community.
I think you'll find that on the last one on quality of life.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a couple that speaks to that under quality of life. But it's fine to have them kind of, cause there are several throughout this. We talked about it during council's retreat, but there really is a lot of crossover and overlap with some of these things.
Good point.
You know, uh, just to visit that, that, the broad objective, um, ensure the continuation of a diverse mix of community-oriented events and programs that make and a strong sense of community and belonging. So pull the words that you, that you've worked for, you crafted very carefully in the vision statement to this, which I think would reflect exactly what you were just talking about. Again, I apologize. You did it again, but, um, that might do it.
That's great. Yeah. Thanks, Jody. That's a great suggestion.
Okay. All right. So the next one, foster a well-informed citizenry by providing outreach, education and opportunities to engage with their, I should say, the community. All right. And I just added some notes as I was listening to the presentation and council's discussion, um, from your updates. I was adding a couple of notes that I felt like tied in. So you can ignore those for now, just capturing thoughts, um, cause things really connected there.
What you thought should be free.
This is one that was talked about a lot. The staff objective was originally a council objective. Develop a more proactive two-way communication and cross-departmental approach, approaches to work with the neighborhood throughout the city, including those with and without formal homeowners associations. And the next language in blue is in short, city processes are equitable, inclusive and welcoming to all people. And this originally said develop processes.
Yeah, that gives a, that gives a, uh, a defined rather than kind of a nebulous word.
Number four, quality of life. Alright, so this top focused objective, this was originally one of council's objectives. To develop and communicate to the community, a plan for the acquisition of additional open space entrails. It also asked to revise the language a bit to include to the community. Truly make sure that we capture that we wanna be communicating that out to the community. Yep.
I was just gonna say, like, we normally don't wanna show where we wanna expand necessarily because it jeopardizes our sometimes ability to, for real estate acquisition to go moving. So I would, you know, maybe it's like, yeah, yeah. I, I don't know if you guys read it like, like that or.
I see it as an overall, we still are looking towards acquisition.
I think this all.
Not specific properties.
We had just had an election and if we're going to add purchase anymore, we need to get it done.
Just, I'll show some notes for something for.
Full support of doing that.
I manage expectations on what that is.
Good, okay. And I know on the next one with, um, or on any of these, or the third one, developing a trail master, th- there's a regional event that people are getting together to look at the region and see where the connections need to be made. So we just need to know in the back of our heads, um, that's happening.
Do we wanna say anything about, some of them are across other jurisdictions, like, like try, trying to go all the way around Stanley Lake? Just working with other jurisdictions to make those things happen?
And that's what's happening regionally throughout the metro area. That's an initiative starting.
They're like collaborating, organized with neighboring communities. And originally this, uh, one update, the PRL comp master plan and libraries master plan to ensure that they are representative of our diverse communities needs. That was originally in the council column. Staff had shifted it over into the staff column, but then expanded it with a couple of these other ones you see above. And I just fleshed that out and put some distinctions in there. So for all of these, just make it out. So this next one you'll see here, review and refine fee under fine-based city programs to increase awareness, understanding and adherence to policies within our community. That originally stemmed from some of the conversation during council's retreat around dog licensing and parking rules and regulations and there being some confusion around that and how that could be clarified. So we broadened that goal. And then those two very specific ones would be bullet points underneath these broad goals. Reactions to that.
Um, was this another one where we were very specific about, uh, direction around the dog licenses? Does this capture that enough? Cause we very blatantly said we wanted to do away with them as in that, or some level of first X amount where.
But as long as we do it.
That's what I'm saying though. There was like a specific thing we wanted to accomplish. And if I look at this, I wouldn't know that we asked to accomplish that.
So we need that bullet point. But I'm glad this, I'm glad this is put in because, you know, we've heard a lot about that. We get emails as far as, you know, it's, it's not just the fines, but enforcements and how do we do our, you know, our code enforcement and what should, you know, should be in there. If it's in there, we should enforce it and how we should enforce it.
Yeah, I agree. I shouldn't, it shouldn't be a, because we get questions like that all the time. Well, can this person be doing that? Like, I don't know. Let me ask. Because I don't have a good place for me to just pull that up and say, you know, your neighbor can't have that R B in the street for the last few months.
Didn't, didn't I see code enforcement somewhere else too?
There is a code enforcement one a little further on.
So are you suggesting that you maybe want the dog licenses to be called out as a specific staff focused objective within this so that it reflects the council direction and conversation that you had?
Does it have to be put in the budget to carry that?
I think would be appropriate.
And also I just have a question on, it says continued utility bill assistance programs. I don't know because it wasn't here during COVID. Um, are some of the, were some of those programs, did they have COVID money in it? I don't know how many programs we do have. And how much are we doing? Are taxpayers' dollars going to subsidize?
To your point, some of it in the last few years was COVID dollars. However, prior to COVID, I believe the city had a utility assistance program and that was based on the same, the same, um, levels that they use for Excel, for other utilities like Excel. And, um, what's it called?
Leap.
Well, leap is the lower.
Yes, so the city, to my recollection, uses that as the baseline for assistance for residents. But I believe that was already set prior to COVID.
What are those programs? I'm just questioning how many of them do you have?
Leap's an ongoing program. Is this water you're having an ongoing program? Is it completed most afternoon?
We have a, we do have an assistance program that, that's been in place for many years.
I thought that was against the charter. We can't charge different people different prices.
It's a, it's a, it's a limited, it's a limited program, but it's available to all. Based on certain criteria. We can get more information back to council if you wish on the utility billing assistance program.
I'm always for a roundup program. I would round up so that other people could have assistance. So if we don't like doing it ourselves, there are other people that.
We force the people who need it wherever else. So you tough it up. But anyway, let's go over.
It's good for everybody.
Alright.
Down to, I already five? Alright, so we have one that staff is recommending be added to kind of broaden out some of the more specific ones that council had.
But I don't have that one.
We're not. Expand and leverage partnerships.
I think maybe you jumped a page.
I'm sorry about that. There we go.
Yeah, we hadn't quite finished out.
Sorry about that. Alright. So this one, we've got expand and leverage partnerships with organizations that support the arts, libraries and Westminster's history to maximize residents, businesses and bigger access to these amenities throughout the city.
So no changes there.
Am I going first?
I just would like to add. No, I just would like to add, um, that we make sure that, I mean, it's in there now, but I like it to remain the North Metro Arts Alliance because we partner with them, but it's not in here as.
Specifically stated?
Yes.
I don't know how it should be spelled out, but reading this, one of the things that I've heard fair amount about in the art district is that we have signs that say, there's an arts district. And they, I mean, that was when you were leaving, they put those signs up and then it's like, well, there's those signs. And they feel like you put up some signs and called it good. Whether or not that's true or not, I think that we need to look at where those signs are, figure out how we're focusing in that area. Should those signs be, and that we have a, you know, new art place a little further south. Um, I think we should really, uh, look at what those signs mean and how we're strategically looking to actually support that area if we're gonna put signs up, I guess.
Yeah, um, because the that historic area is feeling and hears all the time. And I went to, uh, I was asked to one of the forums uh, to look at their whole core focus was bringing arts to downtown. And I, first thing I said was, well, you know, we have an arts district in the city. And they looked blank and that's what I spent my 45 minutes talking to them about was educating them on what staff did not tell them.
Yeah, and I mean, literally with the signs, like, is there a map that says here's where each of those signs are and what the boundaries of the arts districts are? I mean, I'm glad it's in there, but I, I feel like there needs to be some like, some teeth to, to it because you, I could easily say, hey, well, we put some signs up. We're doing some events down there. Know what I mean?
I know that the Historic Landmark Board is working on signage as well. So, and maybe they should also be identified in here as far as like an objective that they're, um, that we need to continue to leverage them as a resource for us. But I know the historic parts, they're keenly focused on, I don't know about the art part, but I think we have resources in place already that we need to leverage a little bit more to really enhance what we're trying to accomplish here.
Did we actually, um, get this to qualify as an actual arts district to get funding or to be as geographically? Cause I know we, they were trying. And so there's like a real designation of an arts district versus us just calling it that?
Before my time, so I don't know. You know, the signs are there. That's much as I know.
So it'd be good to verify that.
I know they went for what you're talking about and the city wasn't supporting whoever they were working with. And Becky will know what happened. And right now, all they hear is the focus on downtown.
Any other comments or additions? Anyone see anything else that's missing from district art, culture?
Oh, I can say from being on the Historical Society board where it says elevate the profile of Westminster's arts and culture and history. While we do get the Bull's House, um, from the city to use for the museum, we get little or no help except if like we're having the, um, vintage baseball and things. And I, I rail on people. We might get one thing on a Facebook post to share that it's happening, but we do it all on our own otherwise. Things have gotten a little bit better in the last six months, but I just still have to raise it because it's been a lot of years that, um,
Add historic after elevate profile of Westminster's arts and culture and history.
Um, the only thing I don't see in here necessarily is like the, just having it be representative of the community. Um, so that the cultural, um, aspect be representative of the community. So we have, well, it is in the, as celebrate diversity, diversity humans can celebrate diversity. Alright, and I'm.
It comes to the lessons?
It's been the first part of it, so. Got to focus on that.
Alright, robust infrastructure. The first change is to add a broad council strategic objective. Develop recommendations and an associated action plan for addressing deferred capital improvement projects, programs and maintenance in relation to operating budget allocations.
So what does that mean?
It is a little So I think a lot of the conversation with staff was around making sure that we're balancing or the city is balancing, uh, capital improvement planning and deferred maintenance on roads and other infrastructure and making sure that those things are put into the budget as well as your operating expenses and trying to balance and allocate accordingly. So that deferred maintenance doesn't fall further behind.
I think it could be, right, like written a little bit.
Yeah, the, the focus objectives make sense. We had a great discussion about that. That first part, yeah. Chunky's a good word.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, reading it aloud, it'd be much simpler.
We can streamline. Well, the way you said it verbally was in plainer language, I think, that ended up in the writing.
Alright, we will streamline the language.
You know, as I see it, this is just part of the budget.
I like the focus on deferred.
Yeah, but what does deferred mean?
Means that you're deferring it.
That it means you have a maintenance project you should do, but you don't have the money to do it, so you're pushing it away.
Or reprioritizing what you are doing.
Absolutely, but that's all done in the budget to say, well, we're gonna do that later. What's the point of this?
It's, it's highlighting the fact that we want to, let's say, improve our P Q I and put more money towards roads.
Well, then what we should do is have 100 less employees and put that $10 million to the P Q I.
I would manage it. But, but our, our strategic plan then drives the budget too, so.
Yes, absolutely.
And then there, it's gonna propose a budget that balances capital operating.
There you go.
So we will streamline the language.
I, I'm wondering if, doesn't that focused objective really describe what's in the left-hand column?
Yes.
So maybe that just moves over. And that's the overarching council objective.
We define what, cause not everybody knows what capital is.
Oh, that's a good point. Yep.
People don't, what does that mean? If we could use that.
That's where we go with our core services and our.
Yeah, like maybe something that like wraps, wraps around.
Yeah, plain, plain language it.
Good point.
Flashback, actually. First time somebody's said that to me and I was, you know, trying to figure out what the hell they were talking about. I know we're gonna spend money, but what exactly?
Like that board thing you were talking.
First become a manager and they start letting you control money.
Goes to your head.
Alright, the next one, we put together a broader council objective and then shifted your original objective, objective over into the staff.
Really specific one.
Yeah, it was very specific. It was increased connectivity and city sidewalk build out and compliance with ADA rules and regulations. We broadened the council's goal to expand the city's transportation and mobility network to enhance access for our community.
The, and that, just to, for background on that one, the, what the staff, uh, raised was that sidewalks is one of the elements, but also the street crossings, um, pedestrian crossings, uh, the connectivity with our trailheads um, is often where this, the ADA work focuses. And so, um, it was the word sidewalking that was, the side, sorry, the word sidewalk that was limiting. Um, so that was the effort there for. So that was the effort there for rewriting that one.
Well, I don't like it because now it's, is there some way we can take the focus objective and say, you just increase the connectivity of the city in pedestrian ways and build out and compliance with ADA regulations and regulations? Like it focused on pedestrian? If you didn't like sidewalks, it's pedestrian with anything other.
It doesn't include, like, I don't know, if you're riding your bike on a trail.
But I don't work, we have enough biking.
Well, the trails, you ride your bike and you walk or run. That's why I use a term like mobility so you can just get it all in there.
Increase connectivity and comply with ADA rules and regulations. Because then that takes all the connections, takes trailheads, takes pedestrian crossings. Safe, safety.
We have ADA somewhere.
Outreach.
Oh, what?
Yep, we have it under the council objective around ensuring that their policies and programs that provide access to everyone in the community.
Transition room.
I think maybe the question is, you know, in broadening it, it gives you the room to add additional objectives as you move forward.
But that's what I don't like.
So my, my question is, are there other things that you would want to do around mobility aside from the ADA compliance and access?
Yeah, there's stuff like bus stop improvements that we might want to nest in there.
So that's one example. And if those are things, if those are things you anticipate doing, then it, then it makes sense to broaden the objective. If, if you don't anticipate doing other stuff, then maybe it doesn't, but that's the question.
Our TV is responsible for 10 feet.
We're going to get it. We'll have an update, you know, grant opportunity or tip, tip project that will include enhancing our bus connectivity, all on for all, for example. So there's other things other than ADA.
That, too, that discussion originally was the sidewalk part was to make sure certain parts of our city still don't, you know, have full compliance. And that was just, it was one of, let's make sure that we get that. And, you know, it's not one of those all or nothing, but it was, it was a critical component to, to, to have equity throughout our city.
I just, I, I mean, I'm like, I'm thinking of our improvements along 92nd Avenue with lane transitions. Just basic improvements that are for safety that we would want to be able to point to say, yeah, we should do that because we steps out here.
We definitely, you know, we definitely need some pedestrian crossing safety zones. We've heard that, you know, especially with beating and awareness. But I didn't, I, I just didn't feel comfortable losing that sidewalk component though.
I wouldn't get rid of it. I would just say, I don't know if it's all relative to ADA.
Okay. Well, if we do sidewalks, you gotta be ADA compliant, yeah. Anyway.
Any trail connections, any pit.
Okay, so we can take that out because it's one of those things, if you do it, you have to do it that way anyway. So it's department.
Just removing compliance.
Because we'll get an email on it.
So what are we going to tell them to do?
I think it sounds fine.
Just thinking.
Well, if we had another, would it, would it be easier if we just added another box under that? And then as far as pedestrian connectivity and safety?
Well, it's for cars too, though, like the one for 92nd was.
But are we trying to focus in on it so it doesn't become so broad that we end up spending most of the money on this and hardly any money on the sidewalks and the sidewalk cuts? Wasn't it elevated to be a budget item?
Yeah, then we can, we can put it in the budget.
I mean, I could do it all at once.
No.
Sarah was mentioning that there's some tip propositions coming up and stuff, so.
I just want to have some basis and some flexibility for what we.
They'll look.
As long as we keep the broadness in the left column, then.
It doesn't exclude any opportunities.
Right.
Prioritize it.
The object, the focused objective prioritizes and the broader objective on the left-hand column, you still have the budget decision-making, right? To decide what you're going to put money towards. I think the key words in the left-hand objective is enhance access, which was the, a, a big part of the original discussion that you had in your retreat, so. Everybody okay?
Yeah.
All right. So this last two pages, these are actually when we worked with staff, we crosswalked all the existing staff objectives, initiatives, and things that were taking place in the previous strategic plan to see where there was alignment with current strategic plan and what council felt was appropriate and where there wasn't. So these are all of the things that didn't necessarily align with one of these, the aboves. Or they're ongoing initiatives that have really now been operationalized and there are things that staff just kind of at a, on a daily basis. They do these things that's kind of ingrained in the way that they operate throughout the year, their existing programs. And what we'd like to have staff do so that there is still some tie for these ongoing activities to the strategic plan is to link them to your guiding principles. Because as I read through them, most of them do have a pretty direct correlation. Either, there are several that are kind of duplicative of some of the objectives we've already gone through. And there are others that I think have really clear relationships with the guiding principles. That can be some work we do with staff to get these categorized. That way, there's nothing that dropped off and just disappeared from the previous strategic plan. You see some at least continuity that you can have that.
You did a rather large effort.
Well, if you look at a lot of these things, this is my two cents and something I always found frustrating about our former strategic plans. A lot of these are things that how we're going to do business versus things we're going to do.
Exactly.
They're not actionable goals. They're like, I want you to make sure you work with our statewide, regional, county, school, district level conversations and things like that. We're going to do those things anyway. But for whatever reason, the prior council thought they should be qualified as points in here, but there's just.
Why do we just leave them out for now?
It sounds, that's.
Yeah, they will, they won't be reflected in the strategic plan. This is really just, once this document is finished, as a way for you all to know. But they didn't just disappear somewhere and that what staff does has a connection.
This is a views performance measure and other sources of data to inform decisions on city tours and programs. But our key point on the strategic plan is measurable KPIs. And so, like, I don't want, what does that mean as far as if we cut that? What is that?
I didn't hear that we're cutting these, these are just unknown. So we don't need to have them in the plan. I mean, they're still.
I mean, okay, we're always going to pursue both cash funding and debt opportunities in addition to state sort of funding.
I mean, and back to the one you mentioned, I mean, they should be doing this with everything they do anyway.
Yeah.
It's just more to operational.
I was going to say, I see this more as operational guidance and it, and the point being just making sure that each one connects to the guy, to a guiding principle that you have identified as a, as a city council.
And I agree with that 100%. I, I guess my question for, for Jody, for you is like, like, how do you make these more part of the, the culture and like actually say, these are the things that we want people to some of it's training, some of it, I mean, you're not gonna, you know what I mean, like operation, like you're going to take this list and how are you going to, like, know you expect this of, of people? Maybe that's something that you come back with after you do it for a while, but.
Yeah, I think, I definitely think so because we, we're not going to lose this. In keeping with a lot of the discussion from council now and earlier tonight, operationalizing the strategic plan is really the objective. And I think with this, this plan being much more focused, much more clear, we're able to then go and operationalize a lot of it. I also wanted to augment what Council Emmons had said. And this is, this plan will be unique and stronger because it, it will have performance and outcome measures built into the plan. And so that will be the overarching difference here. And then we will take those as your staff and implement operational KPIs to match your performance expectations. So if you set service level expectations for us, for example, around access for our services to the public, like earlier this evening, we will go ahead and really get into the fine grain of how to do that. And you'll tell us at this level because it's in the plan and then we'll implement it at the, at the operational level. So we won't lose these at all. In fact, it'll be the opposite.
I actually think a really great exercise could be to just do as suggested here is you have created guiding principles as a council that you are providing as direction to staff. And having staff go through the exercise of aligning these things with those council directive guiding principles as well as the core values that the employees came up with, that the dual nature of that exercise could really engrain these in staff and more deeply engrain them in the culture of the organization and how you operate. That's what I would recommend.
For our citizens that read this, because I hadn't said a word, but the third one on the last page from the bottom. But the transformation of the map via phased approach by remodeling the gymnastics area into a community theater with a long-term plan to have the facility be a hub for cultural connections within the city has made the historic area a little bit happy and exciting.
Which, yeah, this is, this is just reminding me as, because I meant to ask this question of staff a while ago. Because I remember we were talking about the cultural plan update and the theater being one of them. That's just, is it, I'm, I'm assuming it's still on the docket at some point to get from staff is an update on things like that.
Yes, they're working on it right, right now. It was tied into an, an earlier discussion into the council. And we'll bring it back.
And Jody, where it says as part of the annual budget process, the city will continue to restore and expand funding to FY19 levels and restart programs, pause budget spending. I have no idea what those are, were, what we're looking at. Can you sort of at some point give us?
Yeah, that's a good question because some directions that we've had is that we didn't like certain levels of like employment and stuff, so there's a, that kind of the same thing.
I just don't know what that.
It'd just be good to see it.
Yeah, I just said before.
I mean, I think that one example of that, it's a, it's a, it's a micro level example of that would be we're, we're still restricting at, at City Park Recreation Center for swimming because we haven't been able to restore pre-pandemic lifeguard levels. In fact, went there with my family this weekend and we were not able to get in. It was a one-hour waiting list and it was too late in the day. It was because of our, our, those, so that's one example.
In fact, they're like throwing money at people because we lifeguards over there.
So looking at, yeah, that, that would be one local example that's come up before with in, in, in this room. But we, we can definitely get much more clarity on this, what it means beyond our, our swim, swim and fit operation. Yeah.
If we could just get it, and I think we're all circling on something, but just like a list of programs that were cut and during COVID. Just, I thought you were going to mention big trash pickup. And that's for a couple residents that have been emailing. So if we could just get a reminder of what was cut. Decided to cut that would be.
Well, the things that were added.
Or added, yeah.
And some things, major, a major thing that was added.
That was pre-COVID though.
Are we done?
Right, I just want to make sure that we walked through these. There weren't any other areas or objectives, whether they be council or focused that you felt were missing or needed to be added in or talked about. Like, is this a sufficient list or not?
It's just, you know, point of clarity of like, the next time we look at this, full adoption.
You have another conversation with Shannon scheduled for April 18th to continue to dive further into those KPIs and the performance measures to make sure that you're.
So what we can do on the 18th is run one more time through the, through the rewritten version of this, just to make sure. We'll distribute it ahead of time. Make sure that it's, it's, it's a good match because we did some change, made some changes today. And make sure we capture all those and then we can dive into the KPIs that night. So we'll be, so you have one more opportunity, however many more you want, but, but at least one more opportunity to go through this as a, as a finalized draft.
We meet with staff on Wednesday to go through those KPIs and develop them. See, I'll have them well in advance of the 18th, truly have time to look them over.
As we started to work on the KPIs, we realized we really needed to have this session tonight with city council because we were getting out too far over our ski tips on a few of these and we wanted to make sure we got direction from you first. But we are meeting Wednesday morning with the leadership teams and supporting staff to, to now bolt up those draft KPIs, adjust them to match this. We did tonight.
We'll have numbers to deal with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is 9:15 and we are done. Come on, stick around.